City offices, we're gonna. We're gonna get started here in just a few minutes. We're gonna give our a couple of attendees a few moments to arrive this evening because we've got some very exciting fireworks up for discussion tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody on Zoom land and here in person. We are gonna call towards the City of Carlton Planning Commission meeting for today, Monday, November thirteenth. It's just after six P M. We'll first do our roll call. Would you like to do or would you be able to do excellent?
Commissioner Gek.
Present.
Commissioner Fernandez Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Vandy. Noted on Zoom. Commissioner Terrell.
Here.
Commissioner Nordstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Amaya.
Here.
And Chair Stewart.
I am also present in the flesh. We have a slight adjustment for our agenda this evening. I will pass it off to our city planner who will share with us about continuance for one of our agenda items this evening and we'll continue after that point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, my name is Scott White. I am contract planner of the City of Carlton. And yeah, on tonight's agenda, there are two hearing items. The first hearing item is for a partition. And the second hearing item, that's the Second Street subdivision. We received a request for continuance specific to that item. I am recommending, as we have some people here this this evening that received notice about that item and had planned to present testimony. We have a request from the applicant specifically, and we've got this clarification to today. A request for continuance without taking public testimony or receiving comments from the commission. So what we're requesting is that that item go ahead in the agenda ahead of the the hearing that is scheduled for the partition. So those who are attending tonight are made aware of the request for continuance. It is a specific date of December eleventh is the that's the next scheduled planning commission, next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. So again, yeah, we just received that today and I believe the applicant's representative is here to answer some questions about the continuance, but the idea is not to open the the hearing and that there is some change. We were not exactly sure exactly what is to come forthcoming, but we we have been told that there are some things that will be coming our way to new information that would be included as part of the record and part of the commission's packet for the December eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Scott. Can I? That was confusing to me. So are you saying that item five B on the agenda is struck from today's agenda?
Is yes, in a sense, it will be, yeah, that there's been a request for continuance and specifically not to open a hearing for that item.
For striking that today. And then we are moving forward with five A, the partition of the West Monroe property.
Correct. There has not been a request for continuing for that item.
Could I make a request? Because this is changes to the agenda. Since we know that four A is going to be long and the folks that are here to talk about five A are here. Is there any way that we could put five A ahead of four A and just get them done and let them go home rather than be here till ten o'clock tonight?
I think it's a good idea.
Be amenable? We need a motion?
I think we can slap each other on the back emotionally and just go ahead and do it.
You should let them know and carry on.
We'll do that.
I just think that's more expeditious and respectful at their time. So.
Do commissioners have any problem with that?
No.
Okay, great. It gives us a little bit of efficiency for those attending. We'll proceed for the approval of the October nine twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, starting at page two. And only on page two of our meeting packet. If there are any modifications or suggested revisions, now is the time to no longer hold your peace. Otherwise, we're accepting a motion to approve, followed quickly by a second.
I think a motion to approve. I'm happy with them.
Which is a motion by Commissioner Madrid and seconded by Miss Susie Terrell. All in favor? Say aye. Raise your hand digitally emotionally. All opposed? Hearing none, matter passes unanimously. We have approved the meeting minutes from October nine, twenty twenty-three. At this point, we would like to welcome any citizen comments for any topics that are not on the agenda, including five sub B, the sub S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two application. Is there anybody out there in Zoom land who has a public comment on a non-agenda item? Please raise your hand or otherwise bring yourself to our attention. Hearing none, seeing none. If you change your mind at the end of this evening's festivities, you'll have another opportunity and we'd be glad to give you a couple of minutes then. We'll proceed to what is listed as five sub B, the subdivision file S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two, which we've just discussed as having been requested for a a continuance by the applicant prior to opening the record hearing any testimony or evidence. Mr. White.
Yes, again, this is a subdivision thirty-nine lot subdivision and as of today, we received a request for continuance and along with that request for continuance is a partial waiver of the one hundred and twenty day period. So we we have that in writing. The applicant, yeah, is clear with that period being twenty-eight days. Earlier today, I had a discussion with the applicant's rep of on the timing more so internally as we will need by Tuesday of next week, and I'll make that clear on the the record here. By Tuesday of next week, the November twenty-first will need what the applicant is is planning to provide with respect to additional analysis. And this would be specific to a couple of items that we identified in part of the staff report that staff was not able to make make findings for. So that is anticipated pretty much a week from tomorrow, and then we've got to route it out and have a staff report available on on December fourth. So we're kind of, you know, talking about weeks and days here and in concert with a holiday. But yeah, December fourth would be the staff report. And December eleventh would be the continued hearing date at six P M. No items on that, at least not officially. I think we had kind of a work session. I don't know if we are going forward with that tree preservation work session on that. That's okay. So that's not solely. So the eleventh is totally open. And there'll be nothing else. I think that's it in a nutshell.
Understood. Tyler, do we need a a motion to approve this from continuance for more than seven days? Because I've only ever done this after we've had the record open.
It never hurts to have things officialized.
All right. So at this point, we request a motion from one of the commissioners authorizing the continuance prior to opening the record hearing any evidence or testimony for the S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two seven five one South Second Street proposed subdivision file. Again, this is a continuance until a date certain December one one, December eleventh, where we would revisit this. There were a couple of dates that were identified in that excellent soliloquy by our planner for the applicant to meet. If anybody so moves.
I think more information is better than plus. Appreciate that of the applicant.
Continuance to a date certain December eleven moved by Commissioner Fernandez Madrid. Anybody seconded by Commissioner Nordstrom, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Looks like a matter passes unanimously. Thank you to the applicants and city staff, and we'll look forward to revisiting that thrilling set of documentation in just one month's time. Do our four A discussion topics and action items, do we want to share before we do that with those who were present out there that the matter has been formally continued? Yeah, but the people who were here for Second Street, it just. There's only one. Okay. Well, if you wouldn't mind, and that's just you. Okay, excellent. Then we don't have to worry about inconveniencing anybody else. We'll move on to four sub A discussion topic action item for J R Meadows. Three phasing addition. This is a continued conversation from our October nine, twenty twenty-three, and I will again pass it off to Mr. White. This begins at page three on your packet for the evening.
A question to you. Are we not doing five A West Monroe Street today? That's what I was saying. These are all very straightforward. I thought we could move ahead with those.
That's also fine. Apology, I didn't really want to move both. I'm I'm okay with moving that public hearing for the partition forward if there's no other problems or objection from anybody else. Sorry, I misunderstood that. So we will move on to what is listed as five A on page one of your planning packet. This is the partition file P A R twenty twenty-three dash zero one Collier six two nine West Monroe Street, starting at page seven in this evening's packet. But I don't think it's actually starting on page seven. Yeah, so I'm gonna we're gonna look through here and get you the actual number or the correct starting page, just for those who are following along with us at home. I think that's page fifteen of the overall four hundred and eight page packet. With that, we have formal hearing. So we will open our public hearing and the again, the purpose this evening is for the twenty twenty-three dash zero one partition request. At this point, for I I got on that's the hearings procedure. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings affect or in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of facts or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the land use board or to seek damages in a circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the continue, excuse me, before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. Hearings bodies shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuous to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence testimony. The order proceedings are generally as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed of the application, neutral testimony, rebuttal by an applicant, request for continuance to leave the record open. The closure of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations, followed by a decision. With that, public hearing is formally open. At this time, I call for any commissioners to declare any conflicts of interest, abstentions, bias, or ex parte contact with the subject property or any of the applicants. Hearing none, seeing none from our two remote appearances. We'll proceed on for any audios objections to our jurisdiction to hear this this evening. Looks like we're all excited to be here. We'll proceed next to our staff report presented by city planner, Mr. White.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a PowerPoint here. It's a short one, but we have something to refer to.
Can't hear anybody.
We believe we have rectified that. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're hearing you now. Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. So, yeah. Again, Scott White and, you know, we have, this is a request for two lot partition application. The location identified there of West Monroe and would be what the west of of North Scott Street. There we go. Yeah, I'll be back. All right. So, yeah, parcel size there is almost six acres and the applicant's proposal is to create two one at the three point nine two acre, the other parcel two that is almost two acres there. Parcel two is where the there's an existing dwelling on the property and so parcel two would retain the existing dwelling and and some accessory buildings. So we have a comprehensive plan map designation and a zoning designation that are pretty much one and the same. The agricultural holding is compliant map and zone. And then we have in the staff report, we've identified relevant criteria and standards. And so they're all sort of bullet listed there and shown on on the screen and also on the front page of the staff report. And findings in the staff report address all of these, the A H zones, standards, general development standards. There's code language specific to partitions. And of course, this is the type two application process that we have. So next slide, please. So just, this is just a summary of the key criteria here that we have in the the report. And the first bullet there is the fact that this is an A H zone property. And that that being said, there is a minimum lot size. It's actually fairly small of seven thousand five hundred square feet. And as I mentioned, those lot sizes are in the acreage area there, so they they easily meet the this criteria. This is a quasi judicial hearing and we're only here to to look at how the proposal meets the current criteria. But I do want to inform the the commission on a side note. And so and absolutely unrelated to this quasi judicial hearing that there is a proposal that we have with the code update to increase that lot size from seven thousand five hundred to a minimum size of three acres. That again is at a very initial stage, but we will be making that proposal to the planning commission as part of future code updates. Don't want to go too much down the rabbit hole there on that one. But anyways, I also have another, there's a more on back to the quasi judicial hearing, we have findings that there is water sewer available there in a in a in a public right of way. The city engineer recommends water and sewer service lines be constructed to parcel one connecting the city pipes there. So that's the the one key proposed condition that we have should the planning commission choose to approve the partition as proposed. Staff also observe each parcel to remain in sufficient size to operate agricultural uses identified in that section there. That's a part of the Carlton Development Code. So this is not a residential zone. This is an agricultural zone. And there's no intent here as part of the materials to create lots. There is a master plan shadow plat that is more so an exercise because the code itself says do so. And so the applicant has provided a a shadow plat, but staff makes it clear in the report that we haven't done a lot of analysis to that. There are some parcel sizes that are various sizes and all of them being what more than seven thousand five hundred. But yeah, I just wanted to mention the relevancy of the the master plan that was included as part of the packet. And then finally, staff unable, the last bullet there, staff unable to make findings to support right of way dedication, potential extension of West Monroe Street and street improvements based on existing A H zone, the limits that are in place with that zone, restrictions of uses, potential to rezone too. The the zone itself speaks that this is a holding zone for future difference. So that is expected that development come and rezone first. Also, rough proportionality test is is mentioned briefly in the staff report. Didn't go too much into that, but basically that's a tough one for for staff to 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 make findings in this case for dedication and improvements to roads out there. The staff report speaks to existing conditions of of the of the streets out there. Basically, there gravel, no curb sidewalk or gutter or anything like that. And then finally, staff report didn't go too much into this, but the T S B, the Transportation Systems Plan does not identify mapped continuation of West Monroe. So another plug for something in the future here that the city has, which would be a an amendment of the T S B. There's funding for that and scoping that will be in the future, in the near future, and maybe this area of town also is worthy of looking at for 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 mapping. But those go the next slide there. Those are that's just the key and criteria in a nutshell there. As far as the conclusions and recommendation of staff, here we are recommending approval and we have three conditions of approval to to the staff report. These are shown there, one, two, and three. And so and I'll just kind of quick without reading all that that stuff there, there is a need for a final plat that the applicant would provide there. I mentioned that there are some requirements for extending water lines and the easement description that that needs to be shown also on the final plat and that the city attorney would review that to make sure that the easement, there's kind of the easement itself be shown sort of a dashed line on the a plan, but there's also a description that would go with it to identify who the beneficiary of the easement is and what the purpose of that easement is. And then final plat prior to, we're just kind of talks about what what the applicant number three there was just turn in as far as I think that's verbatim from the code there as far as three sets of plans and that sort of thing. So that is it and happy to answer questions from the commission.
Joe, you hit those lights. I want to jump right in and thank the applicant. I pre viewed all of these prior to the meeting. They were very complete. I have no questions. Obviously, everybody else is going to want to comment, but it seems very.
Be straightforward.
Yep.
Any commissioners have any questions? Actually, at this point, we actually proceed to our applicant's report and presentation if there are, if you have supplementary materials.
No supplementary. I I I want to comment on some of the criteria, but if this isn't the place.
You're welcome. You're welcome to do that right now.
Well, the the one recommendation that the sewer and water be placed. What if it stays goats? Do we want goats up to the city water supply?
It's a part of any improvements.
Well, but but there there is no proposal for improvements. And I was talking with Brian today. And the way you typically hook to a sewer is you go in through the the riser. Well, the closest riser is they they did in some improvements down there and volume is so great that they had to lock the lid down, no bend holes, lock it down to keep it from. And so where I would hook a sewer isn't a good location. So now I need some engineering and what's the best location and what's the best way? And and so all of a sudden, we have an engineered project for a proposal that doesn't exist. But to continue to put the goats on it in February, the the whole point of this exercise is to create a tax lot for tax and estate planning purposes. No change of use, no zone request, no houses, no nothing. And the process is also you people aren't supposed to bind future councils. Let's say we all get hit by lightning on the way and somebody new shows up and oh, boy, I have something. There's a right of way to accompany it. There's utilities to accompany it. There is no island being created. Any issues raised here would also need to be solved with the permitting process to build this house. And so we're a little bit chicken and egg carton horse kind of thing here at this level.
So I have a question for the city attorney, given the applicant's questions. So Tyler, as I'm understanding this and having pre read this before the meeting, it's it's binding when it says are to be submitted to the city prior to constructing any improvements. This gentleman is saying he has no plans, but if for estate planning purposes, they get the subdivision, they decide to sell that lot to whomever, it would then be incumbent on the buyer of that property to comply with those, correct? I want him to have that assurance.
Well, also before we I might not wearing my glasses. Are you the city attorney?
Yes.
Are you with Hagerberg Reader? Okay, is there, do we have a conflict of entrance? Doug Fredericks is the estate planner that is working with this there in your office. That should probably be said out loud upfront.
I have not done any work on that and I don't have any information. So it is a potential conflict, but not an actual conflict right now.
Because you're actually not voting.
I would say there there is, there is, there is no intention here other than estate and tax planning.
Right. But also for our clarification as well as for you, the way I'm reading it is that would be prior to constructing any improvements of which you have no plans. But say, you know, your family, Grandma died, decided to sell off that lot. Whoever buys that lot would be held to that, not you. That's the way I understand it. And that's what I'm asking counsel for his interpretation.
I know.
Yeah, so the the intent was we're creating a lot. So now we have two lots and typically when we create a lot, we want a service line to that lot. So
So now we have two lots and typically when we create a lot, we want a service line to that lot. So it can whether they build on it or somebody else builds on it, they have service. And so that that is the intent is that we just do the service line. We only have access to that back lot through an easement. So that's what we're saying. Just run the service line in in the easement and you stop it. Um there would be no impact. Doesn't matter what it's being used for, whether it's goats or whatever else, they won't be able to impact the system because the water service will have a gate valve on it. It'll be closed. The sewer service will have a cap on it. It'll be closed. It's just it's ready. You've got a lot. They can have service.
But given what he just said about the pressure being tremendous and then it's been capped off, I don't know if you're familiar with.
I am familiar with it. The pressure is only that high when.
It's seasonal flow.
Yeah, it's in the winter when we get massive foot I N I flows. But yes, I I am aware of that.
So it can't, it can be done.
Yes, it can be done.
Okay.
So, but not during the massive storm.
Good. So like I said, um I I guess I don't understand when you say a service line. I need to be hooked into the this sewer and it's when somebody comes in with an application, they just pick up from where I've left off and go?
Yeah.
And so I need a meter charge, S D Cs?
Uh I I would have to ask the city, but I think that only happens when they actually build and when they actually have a service that goes in there. That's when the S D C is charged.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't expect that there would be an S D C at this time. And there's no meter that's required at this time either.
And that's true, I'm asking on his behalf, cuz I wanna say if we grant this, he's not gonna get you know, something snuck in as a condition of approval. The way I'm interpreting that is prior to constructing of any improvements, whether it's him or a subsequent owner. So you just validated that. So thank you.
But is uh well, you know.
Maybe it said, do we need to rephrase it? I I'm kind of wondering it. Is there requirement prior to the city signing the final plat? I'm just kind of that.
And that and that's it for me too. I mean, because there's gonna be an easement granted, but I'm not putting down any gravel.
Yeah, right.
There's gonna be an easement granted for pipes when they need to go in. But why am I putting down the pipes? Where do they go? Does the house go in that corner or over there or over there or over here? Doesn't matter. It is like any other subdivision. If you go out and look at subdivisions, they all have service lines that are stopped right at the property line. Um and then whoever builds.
This is a subdivision.
Well, I understand it's it's a partition. Partitions are the thing where you have a service line that stops at the property line and whoever builds connects to those.
So essentially, this easement will exist on paper, but he is not required to do anything to this property, just acknowledge.
Am I hearing you correctly? You're saying I need to bury the pipes?
All in the same.
What I'm suggesting is they have the easement and they build the service lines. So there's a water service line and a sanitary service line. They're both capped. They're not active, but they're there for whoever builds. And right now, the only way to access that property for those service lines is through the easement.
So the easement exists, potential utilities exist, but he's not gonna get a water bill from the city for having buried.
No.
Okay.
So the easement is there for perpetuity.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that the that the easement exists on paper, but if it's a goat pasture. Yeah, there's the easement, but I mean, there's nothing visual delineating that gravel, as you mentioned, whatever, nothing.
If I'm not mistaken, there it is a requirement through uh O R S ninety two. There's a subdivision uh statute that speaks to the extension of when you create a lot, you have to have a serviceable and sometimes uh that is, you know, the the I think the state has created something to make lots more shovel ready. Um and so that might be the, I don't know, we went into it with great detail with with the staff report. It's it's a partition, but uh yeah, that that clarity needs to possibly be in there just uh I I'm reading the condition there.
Make a uh.
No, there's.
There's gonna be an opportunity.
Quite yet, yeah.
Yeah, we're kind of a a little bit kind of out of the water, so I guess that's a a good way for us to segue back into our um we've if you don't have a specific report, there's gonna be an opportunity for more back and forth. Um but are there any other individuals, including this gentleman here as a proponent uh in support of this pending application?
Uh but I'm Joe Emerson. I've been uh in construction for a number of years. Uh developer as well as uh an inspector. Uh so that's where I'm speaking from. Uh everything that the engineer said is one hundred percent correct and what you're saying is correct. There is a uh way out of it since that uh lot number two is oversized. If he makes that number one a flag lot that goes clear to the street, then his lot service only has to be in the street. Uh so that would be a way that he wouldn't have to put in pipe, but he'd have to uh make that lot number one uh number, well, whatever number was the house lot uh be uh smaller so that lot number two, the larger lot, had access to the street. And that would get out of the easement part, but it would allow it would also get out of the utility part.
You get out of the part of the utility. You wouldn't have to put in as much pipe cuz he wouldn't have to go through the easement.
But I think that would also im- implicate new maps and a at least a revisited application, correct? Cuz it the analysis is based upon that which was submitted here with a east and west parcel as opposed to a flag lot. Am I understanding that?
A flag lot's not the only way he could do it. He couldn't just adjust the line.
And there's also a thirty foot wide easement for access on.
Okay, well, we'll call that somewhere between proponent and neutral.
Uh I I'm just, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent, excellent. Uh a man follows the Supreme Court too. Um is there anybody else out in Zoom land who would uh self identify as a proponent of this application? Uh anybody in Zoom land or present that would consider themselves an opponent to this pending application? And the final call for anybody who's neutral undecided, just wanna have something to say about this. Hearing none, seeing none. Um I think at this point, we can revisit our conversation both with the applicant and kind of get an assessment from staff on whether or not there's a reasonable compromise, if there's language that can be um adjusted here. I think the island, the idea is to avoid an island that's not serviced. And so is there some sort of collaboration between the city acknowledging that there's no present intent for development and that the city is going to demands require services to this location? Is there a compromise that can avoid the immediate placement but have some sort of um not performance bond or anything, but some sort of precondition to taking any further steps or is there based upon your perspective, um kind of fundamental underlying requirement that the services be buried to a point?
If I could just before the engineer speaks, our code does require for all partitions that all parcels um that will exist after the partition, we have service lines run. So and that that is shall language within our code.
Mm hmm.
The only alternative is a uh performance guarantee, which would be performance bond essentially. So that's the legal side.
Okay.
Tyler, can you give me that code?
All right, it's in seventeen point eight eight.
And shall, not may.
Yeah.
And for the benefit of everybody, um could you just give us a little bit of um primer on uh the performance bond and how that might work and how that might be a tool that we could use uh as a possible condition of approval to meet in the middle?
Um but yeah, before I jump into that, um and that is seventeen point eight eight point zero five zero. The language is shall, so E F and E F and G. Um I'm sorry, in the new question.
About just the performance bond, how we might be able to use that tool to um spread the distance or cover the distance.
Cost on the partitioner. Um essentially, they would acquire the performance bond. I have no idea what that cost or what that entails, but for it's generally a hundred and ten percent or a hundred and twenty percent of the total cost of the improvements that they're requesting to be deferred. Um and the purpose of that is so that the city has some recourse if at some point in the future, the improvements are not built as required.
Is that enforceable? It's just a lean on the property? Is that how that works or?
We would have a claim against the bond.
Okay.
For the cost of those public. So it's just.
And where would um where does one, if you're familiar, obtain those types of performance bonds?
A bond provider.
I'm just only familiar with bail bondsman. I don't think we're gonna, I don't think that's what we're looking for here. Okay.
Their bond images. You have contractors all the time. West Coast is, it used to be over in McMenville.
Okay.
Sure, the performance bonds.
Yeah. Okay, and that'd be a hundred and ten percent of that reasonably estimated value for putting those services in in today's dollars? Do we have a general estimate of what that what that looks like? If you if we.
Footages.
Would that be on the petitioner to get a couple of bids?
Well, put together an estimate that we'd review. And I I believe it's a hundred and twenty percent that and I think there's actually three forms that of financial guarantee that the code allows.
If he wants to do the work himself, he can just do an evaluation, get the bond, fill out your form and.
Uh if he does an estimate, he sends it in to me and I say, yeah, that's good or no, I don't agree. Uh usually, you know, it's not exact. It's, yeah, that's in the ballpark.
And then Gordon, just so I understand the process, then once the bond is submitted, is he under any kind of fine financial obligation to do it? Is it six months, six years, ninety days?
Uh usually the bonds that we see for this type of thing are on subdivisions. And we typically uh is tied to the ability to uh build the homes and move in.
Right, but in his case, because of the water.
Usually not a timeframe.
That's what I wanted to determine cuz obviously right now is not a great time to do it. It'd probably be next summer sometime. And that way he's not putting further time constraints on what he wants to do, so.
You you see any timeframes on these?
Not on our side.
Okay.
Okay, so that could be, you know, possible compromise in the middle. Um I don't know how much the bonds are gonna cost. Um yeah.
No idea.
Yeah, so that uh maybe we could write that in neither or either you know, a a one of two option, either go ahead, build it and they will come kind of program or the performance bond. I think we could write that condition of approval in the alternative to allow the flexibility cuz he may investigate this and go, I guess, you know, spend five apples and make this, or I could spend eight apples and get it done. Um so.
I think with the code means it's a financial guarantee that I'd have to look at.
A little more broad than just a.
Okay, and I think that addresses or kind of gives a little bit of context to uh condition uh number one. Um with respect to any of the other conditions or the application in general for many of the commissioners, any comments, questions, concerns uh directed towards um the either the planning commissioner or the applicant? I don't believe we've received any letters, comments, or written testimony on this application. Is that correct, Shannon? We haven't received any um public comment. Okay. Anybody have any questions uh for the applicant before we close the public um testimony portion of the pending application of the hearing? Okay, we'll give you this one cuz we like.
Thank you. Um the performance bonds that I've got quite often have uh time limit on them, like five years, uh which might mean that uh every five years you may have to repurchase a a performance bond. So that's something that of the applicant needs to look at as well as the city, how long the the performance bond will be in effect. Because I've had performance bonds run out.
Okay.
It's just information.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Joe.
And with that, we'll close the public testimony portion of our hearings. O R S section one nine seven point seven six three, paragraph six of A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity provide in additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Uh has there been a continuance requested by the applicant? None by the applicant and nobody else here. Um as a result, we closed the public hearing and we will continue with uh our final comments from staff and a recommendation. Mr. White.
Uh yes, thank you, Chair. Um just hearing the testimony here, I'm looking at a possible, maybe we can uh bring that uh condition, um the the slides that had the three conditions there. Yeah, I was just kind of playing around with some ideas. It's based on the the testimony received that is a possibility here and uh after I kind of finish this, maybe the just to check with the city engineer and attorney, but uh the way I am seeing it, there's a possibility that it would be the um after the second sentence there in number one, uh we would add uh kind of the pauses. These service lines are to be subsequently constructed after city approval. At that point, add the following, this service line subsequently concerned after city approval and prior to final plat approval period. Alternatively, the applicant may submit a financial agreement at one hundred percent uh subject to city engineer and city attorney approval. That's kind of what I have right right now.
So for some reason, we're not saying performance bond?
Uh that's more, that would be more restrictive.
Okay.
I think.
There is a hundred and twenty percent, not a hundred.
Hundred and twenty percent.
Well, I bet you give it a break.
Yeah. Does it say financial guarantee?
I'm navigating back. Well, not back to it. I don't let Shannon bail me out. On that big screen. Uh the language in our code is uh it required a performance guarantee.
Performance, sorry.
Is the one.
There we go.
Which includes a surety bond at one hundred and twenty percent of construction cost, deposit with the city for responsible escrow agent and an amount equals one hundred and twenty percent of the construction costs for an irrevocable letter of credit, pledging funds equal to one hundred and twenty percent of the construction costs are available.
And would you want to include some language about uh in the event of expiry or elapsing that this is a perpetual requirement? That it would need to be reissued or otherwise, you know, to to city approved, to city staff approval into the future in the event of expiry or elapsing of a bond?
Well, that has to just be renewed until that's actually done.
Yeah.
I mean.
But just, I've just been adding that specific language.
Thank you.
Yeah, I um yeah, there there's kind of some, you can also cite the section as part of, because we've got a lot of words in there, and so that is another option is to stop at a performance guarantee and then say consistent with the provision under X Y, whatever it was there, we can give a number.
Seventeen eighty point oh five oh.
There we go.
I think that's great.
Performance guarantee, the different section.
Seventeen point two one six point zero one zero.
Yeah.
What was that again?
Seventeen point two one six point zero one zero.
And zero one zero. Okay, and I can read that back to the commission.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, uh cuz I think everybody else is okay with um numbers two. Yeah, I think we're good, uh, because I think everybody else is okay with um numbers two and number three, the applicant, there were no questions worth conditions two or three.
Just starting construction with no work going on.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, it seems cart, horse, chicken, and egg kind of question to me.
You know. Two and three are okay by the two of you. Mr. Bandy and Amaya, any um palms or questions about numbers two or three?
No, none for me.
Okay, I saw a smile on Commissioner Maya's face, so.
None for me either.
That looked like a contented smile. Um, so at this point, we'll have our um city planner again restate verbally for the record the amendment to the proposed condition number one thereafter, I think we'd be ready to uh make a motion based upon the proposed approval date with the proposed conditions. Mr. White.
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, again, this is a proposal to uh add language to the second sentence there shown uh on number one, reading the first part of uh existing condition uh sentence there. These service lines are to be subs- substantially constructed after city approval and prior to final plat approval period. Alternatively, the applicant may submit a performance guarantee consistent with Carlton Development Code, section seventeen point two one six point zero one zero period.
And I would have additional in in lieu of constructing.
Okay. Now, alternatively, in lieu of constructing.
Yes, I like that, Scott.
In turn, in lieu, I'm happy to read that again if necessary, eternity in lieu of construction, the applicant may submit a performance guarantee consistent with section seventeen point two one six point zero one zero.
I think that sounds good, and just to correct the record, the word subsequently was inadvertently stated as substantially.
Substantially.
But we um but just confirming that we didn't make a change there, we're keeping subsequently.
Subsequently, yes, yes, my eyes are failing me now, I do apologize.
No, no problem. All right, it sounds like we have got our approval with conditions as recently stated on the record, we welcome a motion to approve on those terms.
But I'll let you state it, because I want to keep it as unmuddled as possible.
Yeah.
I think you've got a beat on it.
We'll say, uh, the motion is the approval with the conditions for P R twenty twenty three dash zero one, the Collier partition with the staff recommended approvals two and three as written, as well as number one as recently uh eloquently restated in full by uh Planner White. Um, opening for a second.
Second, yeah.
You you moved.
My second, you said it. My second.
Oh, Susie Terrell provides a second. Um, all in favor of uh approving?
Hi.
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 No objection seen, matter passes unanimously. Thank you to the applicant and to city staff for helping us find the middle road, when we could do that in regular politics. Um, the next item on our agenda, thank you again, sir, enjoy your night. Next item on our agenda, I think we might as well start with the fun one, uh four B, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting dates.
Well, that's excedentious.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just want to talk about the fun stuff.
Yeah.
Um.
A little easy stuff.
So Planning Commission is in the third column to the right, these are proposed dates with a couple of modifications adjusting from our normal second Monday of the month. Since this uh is specifically applicable for October fourteen, shifting to October twenty one in twenty twenty four, and from November eleven to November eighteen for twenty twenty four. Does anybody especially opposed, or are we all in favor of confirming that these will be our dates for the next year?
Make a motion to approve.
Commander, commander, Madrid, Commissioner.
Captain's view.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's appropriately stated.
Well, it's captain.
I've been watching too much James Bond, I guess. Um, Commissioner Fernandez Madrid moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor of confirming our planning commission dates as written on page thirty. It all approved, we'll put that on our Palm Pilots.
Love this, I'm gonna take a screenshot, and I won't have to bother you with phone calls and texts. Mexico, thank you.
Okay, well, now that we've gotten all the fun stuff out of the way, the popcorn begins. J R Meadows, phase three, we're continuing our conversation from October nine. Um, if the group doesn't remember, we were talking about a request that was following the initial subdivision about a phasing for this J R Meadows part uh or the third groups putting first and second phase based upon reasonable demand and expectations for uh the market need, I will pass this off to our city planner to give us uh his up-to-date thought.
Okay, I had another um. One slide for this one.
Starts on the. Oh, it's me. Um, it's, well, the verbiage starts on page seven, if that's helpful to you, of four oh eight.
Oh, it's just part of the PowerPoint. No, it's a, it's it's just, you can go up on those there, just sorry, I should have been, uh, the second slide, I think. There it is, hey, we got it, sorry. So, uh, just to um summarize things here, and uh the chair pretty much uh provided a good summary there, it was, this is just like a did, it's not a hearing item, uh, tonight, this is the a phasing proposal that was not identified as part of J R Meadows' uh three subdivision, uh. But uh we uh received uh that and took a hard look at the phasing, uh, the line uh were posed, and the planning commission's packet uh ha- has that that line. Um, and uh basically, there there's nothing of substance uh for the change, there's no uh number, no lot, same number of lots, same size, same streets, everything remains the same. Uh, and the applicant has said, yes, uh, we can complete both phases within the timeframe to which uh the commission has acknowledged, so uh it's really just the the phasing alone. Uh, we did identify uh some minor changes to the conditions of approval, mostly to recognize things like uh the uh tree preservation fencing that goes up uh for phase one, even though construction of of homes are in phase two that, you know, so uh we we did some some minor changes, and the applicant agrees to all that, we have that part of the record, and so when we get uh the construction plans that Gordon will review, he'll look for the uh tree preservation uh fences and uh fencing and things like that, uh, as part of that construction plan. Uh, no, specific to phase one. Uh, so uh, we have um made the finding that uh the phasing proposal conforms substantially to the preliminary plan uh and to the conditions of approval as imposed, and uh after the um meeting of October ninth, uh, staff discussed this matter further with the city attorney, a city attorney is here as well, and so let's have a quick note there that the city attorney agrees with above, the above, and the city engineer available for questions about interim grading, because there were some questions uh a- about that uh at the at the last meeting. Um, so really, it's it's kind of a strange one, to some degree here, so we're just asking if the commission uh if the commission concurs with the staff finding that the proposal to introduce phasing conforms substantially to the preliminary plan as approved by the city. Uh, I think I I mentioned that the code uh has the the chair, uh whoever that is at the time to sign the final plat and signs uh for the commission, saying, yes, this plan that's before me conformed substantially to what we looked at. Uh, and so conceivably, I had a chair look at it and say, well, we didn't see phasing, so this is sort of a record of that, is to say that, yes, uh, this this matter of phasing, though it came substant- came afterwards, uh, we looked at it, we looked at it as a group, and um, yeah, uh, and and there isn't anything of, again, of substance for change. So um, I've talked enough, uh, you have the city engineer and the city attorney here for additional questions, uh, so that's does it come from my part?
Excellent, thanks. I think just the first question from city attorney's perspective, there's not any formal motion or anything we have to do that, you know, as far as modifying the phasing of these conditions, there's no formality that we're gonna have to do, we just in the process of documenting our ongoing ascent to this phasing adjustment?
I I think it would make everything most clear if we did take full action. I strictly speaking, I don't know that it's necessary, but I like to have things officialized, and of that one, Gordon.
And and that would also be us formally creating the the delineation between A and B phases on the conditions of approval as in the red notes?
I, yeah, yes, um. Yeah, kind of trying to think through the wording. I think it would be something along the lines of the planning commission approves of the staff findings. Um, sort of like that, actually, that first question on action requested, um, including notes from city staff.
And for for the record, any modifications that we might have to the order or applicability of the 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 discreet or the specific um requirements at each step, doesn't remove or otherwise modify everything that was previously approved by us, and we're just kind of giving a a schema for prioritization of them? Is that my understanding? No- nothing about the prior approvals or requirements is being removed, it's just a reorganization?
That's correct.
Yeah. Questions from, let's try our uh remote commissioners, uh, to start with, Commissioner Bandy or Amaya, any thoughts, comments, concerns, or questions?
None for me.
None for me either.
All right. Um, how about those present? Mr. Terrell?
Sure, yeah, so um, this is specifically for Gordon, and I have huge concerns about um when they build the first phase, and maybe they decide, yeah, we don't need detention. And then, surprise, surprise, X build comes out, it's different. And then they build phase two, and now all of a sudden, dang it, we need detention, because we're right on the boundary of maybe needing detention, maybe they say not detention. Um, my concern is is in, um, because I know if you do it in two phases, then things are separated, thoughts are separated, storm drainage is, um, things change on the ground beyond the plans. Um, and so that's my big concern, and so what I would like to do is require detention so that we protect ourselves from on-the-ground surprises that happen post phase one, that's fine, the storm drainage is fine, but then all of a sudden, when you added phase two, things changed, because maybe you had too much fill, and that fill got left somewhere. So, that's that's my thought, and um, I know the requirements for detention um maybe aren't um. I I I I acknowledge that we sort of disagree, Gordon, about how the code does reads for detention. Um, for me, um, the seventeen point seven two point oh four oh, the general standards, um, it says number four, it says assured waters drained from the development are substantially free of pollutants through such drainage techniques as sedimentation ponds, which would include detention. And um, I don't know how I don't know how we can align substantially free of pollution without detention. And being as this is a borderline detention, in your estimation of borderline detention situation anyway, I think, given that we're gonna do it in two phases, I think we should require detention.
So my understanding is they're going to design the entire thing. So the design will be set up as if they're building the entire development. So that they're building it in two phases is immaterial to the facilities that will be constructed, because they're going to evaluate everything and design it as if it was all going to be built. So the storm facilities will be built for the entire uh development. That's the, that's the intent. Now, they want to uh do it in phases. So what I would require in reviewing that is that I know there's going to be boundary conditions. So, uh, they built the subdivision over here, here's your boundary, and here's the undeveloped land. Well, right here, there's going to be uh conditions on all the facilities, so the water line stopped. Well, you gotta have a temporary blow-off. So your design, they're gonna have to do like three designs, here's the full improvements, here's the designs for just phase one, that shows those boundary conditions, which water, sewer, storm, they all gotta work without the rest of it being built. So you can't have just phase one and let the storm just flow off across the neighbor, you gotta deal with it. And then they're gonna have a s- a second design that says, okay, now we're building the second part, we're taking out that blow-off, we're regrading this area, so they're gonna, they've made it a little complex for themselves, because essentially, they'll have three designs. They're gonna do the design for the whole thing, so we know the whole thing works. Then they're gonna have a design that says, okay, since we're only doing part of it, here's what we gotta do at the boundary, and now when we do the second part, here's how we adjust everything we just did at the boundary. So I don't see that uh changing their storm drainage requirements is required, we've already said that if you can't fix those surcharges downstream, you're gonna have detention. We've already said that. So that's, that's gonna be part of their design, they're either gonna fix the downstream capacity, or they're gonna give us detention.
And the downstream capacity is um just a pipe that doesn't let the water, so it just takes it all the way to Han Creek, is that?
Right now, it takes it to Han Creek, but um they have areas, they've modeled it where they have surcharges that are very, very close to the surface, and we said that's not acceptable. You either fix that capacity-wise, or you provide us detention, so that we don't have those.
Just out of curiosity, how do you fix that?
Uh, you can put in bigger pipe.
So you're sending more water faster to Han Creek?
No, it's the same amount of water.
But it's delivered.
That you're not surcharging it.
But then it's delivered quicker.
No, it's still in the pipe. Actually, probably, hmm, it'd be hard to say, it might be, might even be slower, because you don't have pressure. See, what a surcharge is doing is it's building up. So now you have pressure pushing the water through.
Sure.
So it's actually gonna go faster, so if you don't have that surcharge, be a little bit slower. So when you get rid of the surcharge, be, yeah, I don't even know if you'll be able to measure it, but potentially, but.
So so what would be their determining factor between like, yeah, it's it's cheaper just to call the bigger pipe in and we'll avoid those surcharges? Is that what's probably, I mean, is that the easiest way to fix it and the cheapest way to fix it? Or could with detention?
They're gonna look at it in their design, and they're gonna cost it out.
And they're just gonna do whatever's cheaper, right? And then the rest of us.
Well, that would be completely up to the developer.
Yeah. And.
And how do we reconcile, how do we?
Pass the design review, whatever they do.
And how do, how do we reconcile that the water should be substantially free of pollutants? And I I mean, how do we reconcile? I I that still isn't clear in my mind, because I don't know how you can send it untreated without sedimentation, without a detention facility. Without sedimentation, without a detention facility to settle out some of that sediment and our total mercury daily loads, all of those things. I don't know how you do that without detention, and I it just doesn't reconcile to me.
And we can have further discussion about that at another time, but that is a question independent of the phasing question that's before the commission today. We've already established the conditions of approval for this development, we cannot go back and change this.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And that would be something that could be continued in the comprehensive plan updates, correct? That specific question about.
Well, it's going to be addressed.
Yeah.
We we've already uh talked about that in other meetings.
Understood, I just, you were just clarifying that that is, that is our outlet for having that continued discussion. All right, um, any other comments on any other?
No, thank you, Gordon, for explaining that, I appreciate that.
Any thoughts, comments, concerns? I see Noel has her gorgeous little yellow hand up, what do you got?
Uh, so just listening to the conversation from just in in kind of trying to, um. Yes, I think that is a concern to ta- to talk about, you know, detention and and how and how that is handled and how we as a city handle that. And obviously, that's separate from from what we're talking about tonight and and approving this to to move forward with the phased approach. Um, which I support, uh, but just thinking back to the comprehensive plan conversation um from the city council meeting last week. Uh, you know, it would be good to, if we could request some sort of um follow up conversation to and and how this applies to S D Cs and some of those. Um. Some of the development or some of the charges for new development, right? In terms of how we want to address, you know, even, you know, specific plantings that uh that that help. That helped the issue that Commissioner Terrell was speaking about, so if I could just kind of put that out there, I. I'd be, I would be interested in following up, learning more about that.
Excellent. I don't know where Commissioner Fernandez Madrid is, but she's not present, so we'll take her silence as something golden. Um, I think at this point, we just need to kind of formalize our ascent to the conditions. Um, not having any modifications, but having. Um, some adjusted priorities as listed on page seven through. Eleven of our final packet, it's the document that is the notice of decision that has been. Um, annotated in red by Planner White. I, my understanding is that it is our intention to request and call for a motion that would. Approve of the proposed phasing as both being um in compliance with the existing conditions of approval. And giving um clarity for our expectations as a. Planning commission on the the development known as J R Meadows three. And what we're expecting, again, we are not removing or modifying any of the conditions of approval. We are collaborating with the applicant for mutual um understanding as to how this will be completed. Uh, but all of the existing requirements will be held to this applicant, otherwise it will not receive their final approvals. And there will not be people residing in um on this subject parcel, am I understanding that correctly, sir?
Yes.
Fair, okay, um, so with that, if anybody wants to move to approve or otherwise reflect our ascent.
All right, um, let me see if I can do this right. Um, I move to approve the, um.
The phasing, as we've discussed.
As discussed, um, consistent with the current. Conditions. Um. But with the additional notations uh for how the phasing should be accomplished.
I think that's appropriate. We've got a fantastically spoken motion and a second from.
A second.
Commissioner Gack, Commander Gack, excuse me, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hearing and seeing no uh opposition, the matter passes unanimously, we have reflected our. Acknowledgement of the adjustment. So with that.
I'm not.
Our discussion and action items in our public hearings are done for the evening. Any comments from the commissioners or anybody else out in Zoom land with non-agenda items that you'd like to talk about this evening?
So I do have a question as far as the, um. When, at what point, if there are concerns or needs to be more discussion about the possibility of detention? What would that, when would that happen?
Gordon will have to approve all of their, all of their uh storm drain plans. Ensuring that it addresses the surcharge issues without detention or.
Or with.
Or with, um, and that would be prior to, um. Final plat approval. I don't know exactly how we have it worded here. But to be before they get to do stuff.
Be part of the design so they can't even start constructing until it gets approved.
What I understand, those would be, there's construction drawings that go into greater detail that what your submission has received as part of the land use packet. There's of course, you know, preliminary grading, preliminary utility plan, all of that sort of thing. That goes into much more greater detail uh in review of city design standards, public design standards that, um. Uh, many more pages of that, uh, Gordon reviews and, you know.
Full set of design, you you have a preliminary that lays out, then they go through and do a full design that comes to me for review. They'll have a probably a geotech report, they'll have a stormwater report. And so those will all be reviewed before their release to actually construct the public improvements.
And they'll be, and from those designs, they are able to determine the turbidity that would be. The the sediment or lack thereof of sediment that would be going dumping into Han Creek, is that?
Uh, no.
No.
They they don't look at the water quality of the stormwater and even in communities that require. Uh, water quality treatment, they don't do that. It's, the stormwater is a interesting uh facility in that it's prescriptive. Meaning there are designs for water quality that uh the agencies have said, these work. If you design these in the prescribed way, we assume they work. And so they don't actually measure before and after. That's, you know, you do for wastewater, you do for water, you don't for.
Stormwater.
That's just the way the industry is set up. It becomes very difficult on stormwater. It's it's not a steady flow, lost water, wastewater is steady flow.
Right.
Go check it.
Storm is.
Storm is, when the storm happens.
Right, this.
Three in the morning, call up Brian, Brian, go out there, go take some tests, so it it gets hard to do it, that's why it's prescriptive. Says you, you build it this way and we've done tests elsewhere that says this will work.
And Gordon, are we just trusting them to grade it the way they say, or or do they, do they, I just from historical experience? The final grading can vary by a foot at times.
Yeah, final grading on the uh. What you'll see after the public improvements are done is the final grading is done on the public improvement. And the grading on the lots is rough. Because they're going to come in and tear it all apart when they build the house. And the final grading on the lots doesn't occur until after the house is constructed.
But the As Built. The As Built plan sometimes varies greatly from the plan. From the presented submitted.
Yes, As Built can be different than design.
Which makes me concerned about. Okay, so I just, I just wanna just be so clear that you hold them to the highest standard that you are legally able to do.
We do that.
Thank you.
Any other topics of interest whatsoever, otherwise, I know you're itching, Commander's itching to go home. We would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I adjourn, I must make a motion to adjourn.
There's the first.
Second.
There's a second, all in favor.
Hi.
Ands.
One quick, um, just next month, I do need to refuse myself from the second street.
Well, no problem. Have a good month, everybody. Thanks, everybody in Zoom land. Marie, thanks for being there as always.